Good morning again, everyone. I would like to remind everyone to please be sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on Iva Nelson, city clerk, for the role call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Councilman Reed is absent. He may join us before the meeting is over. We do have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, God. We thank you for how you love us and care for us. We ask now, God, that you feel clear our hearts and minds, that the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts be pleasing unto you. Thank you for our city. Thank you for the opportunity to serve. We pray all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting that was held on August the 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of August 5th through the 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right. At this time, we do not have a proclamation, but we do have a presentation that we would like to be presented today concerning a project that's going to be coming here in Gaston. So Mr. Hooks, if you'll come and then you can make the introductions.
Thank you, Madam President. This is a follow-up to a presentation that we brought to you, the council, two weeks ago in pre-council. It's proceeded far enough along now that it's the appropriate time to bring it to the public. As you know, two years ago, we interjected healthcare as an industrial sector as one of our targeted industries. This is one of the first major projects that we've had. It falls under those categories. And we have with us today Mr. Keith Whitley, Mr. Tim Coker, and Ms. Susan Moore. Susan is with Riverview. Tim Coker's with CPM, and Mr. Whitley is with Cancer Centers of Alabama. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Whitley to make the presentation. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, David.
Keith Whitley.
I'm the CEO of Alabama Cancer Care Centers of Alabama, and we're here to make a presentation and hopefully secure and purchase a piece of property that the city owns that would work very, very well for our proposed cancer treatment center. We would like to build a freestanding cancer center to include radiation and chemotherapy for the community here in Etowah County. We've identified that several market reports indicate that a large number of people who live in the community are driving to other larger markets for their cancer care, and we just think that's unnecessary. We have previously worked with cities that have had similar situations, and we've helped keep patients in those communities, and we think we can do the same thing here in the Gaston area. Patients having to drive to Birmingham, or Atlanta, or Chattanooga, or up to Huntsville to receive cancer care is very, very difficult on the family, certainly difficult on the patient. But our project, our cancer treatment center, is a drive-up, get-out, come-in, receive your chemotherapy or your radiation, get back in your car, get home, get back to your family, get back to your support system that works well for you. We've been doing this since 1996. We have other locations in the state, and we think we can be a really good community member for Gaston. Our intent is to, we'll bring people, professionals here, to this cancer treatment center. General information, it will have a personnel budget of between three and three and a half million dollars to include the physicians. The building, to include the equipment, is going to be in the neighborhood of $6 million. And then we will have an ongoing presence here. We are a local Alabama-owned, Alabama-focused company. We will hire local subs to work on the building. We'll work with the community leaders to make it have a positive impact on the community. From the parcel that we're talking about is a beautiful track. It'll make a beautiful site for patients who have to go through getting cancer treatment and make it a more pleasing place for them to receive their cancer care. It's just, I think it'll work well for all. I can answer questions from the council about what our intent is, but that's the thesis.
You had said that you've done this in, I think, 11 other cities in Alabama since the '90s?
We have 10 other, 10 of these cancer treatment centers scattered from central Alabama to north Alabama. We're in Fort Payne, South Cock, smaller markets is where we started, and not that Gaston is a small market, but it works well in that it keeps, we have patients who get up, have to drive to Fort Payne, or they can drive to Gaston, or they can drive to Anniston, and that just makes all the difference in the world.
You had mentioned a relationship with UAB about some of the clinical trials that you're involved with.
We work with UAB. It's our state institution. We truly support what they're all about. For those patients who typically would have to drive to UAB to participate in some clinical trials, we work in a hand-holding relationship with them such that the patient can actually receive their treatment and/or their drug therapy in our cancer center under the guides of the UAB trial.
I guess in last question or comment, I like your commitment to the aesthetics. This is not a medical comment, but Councilman Wilson had brought up a good point. That's valuable land on the river. You have a commitment to the aesthetics for our city, to be complimentary of the river and the opportunity that's afforded there from the outside looking in.
We'd like for Mr. Coker to come and sort of tell us about the structure.
Yes, specifically addressing the design of the building, it'll, what you're seeing now is the front of the building. That should be the westward facing, and it'll face First Street. The eastern face that'll face the window is proposed, excuse me, that'll face the river is proposed with a pretty expansive series of windows there to allow, that's where the medical oncology component of the treatment will be. Patients will have view, potentially an accessible plaza or deck area toward the river to utilize that for just the healing experience of the patients. It'll be every bit, the back, there's not really a rear to this building. It'll have two very well-designed and decorated elevations, basars. What questions?
Just to give the layout in layman's terms for the average citizen out there, so this is essentially right next door to the old convention hall on First, right there, and the building, the technical front of the building will face that big parking lot across from Convention Hall essentially, and then the backside of the building, for lack of a better term here, that would be facing the water up on that hill where the existing parking lot is, will be glass, and there'll be an opportunity to have sitting areas and things out there so that it overlooks the waterway. So if you're driving down Rainbow Drive and you're looking up past the monument there, you would see the glass structure of this facility overlooking the water there.
Mr. Whitley, just to kind of touch on and piggyback on a point you made earlier, you pointed out the fact that people will now have the ability to, without having to commute to a larger market, without having to commute to a larger market, patients from Gaston would now be able to get their treatment here. But you also talked about there being no drop-off in the quality of care.
Right.
You want to reiterate that?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, with the amount of time that it'll take to get the building built, we have plenty of time to continue to look at what we believe will be the response to a potential cancer center. We have ordered the latest version of the machine that's necessary to give radiation. It's called a linear accelerator. But with time, there may be some more, there may be some things that we need to identify that as add-on to contribute to the needs of the community. So it's cutting-edge technology, cutting-edge chemotherapy, and participation in clinical trials. So the things that we would not participate in would be the things that typically an intermediate market may not participate in and seek out the relationship with UAB to get the best results.
And as you said earlier about the indigent program that you have, because when I stated, you know, we have 27%, 28% people live in poverty, so that is great. I was sold before, but I'm really excited now.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we realize when we made the decision in '95 to enter into this particular market, smaller markets, that we would have to tackle the problem of how we're going to get all those patients treated and how they, because we didn't want to turn anyone away, so we have put in place indigent programs, relationships with pharma, pharmacology companies to help subsidize those needs. It just takes us a little while to get those patients entered into those programs. But if you come in our door, we're going to figure out a way to get you treated. Thank you.
To Mr. Hooks and to Mr. Green, we just want, healthcare is a very essential thing for all of us, and it affects all of us. And so what I'd like to say is that I appreciate that you all saw the need and continue to see the need to bring healthcare to the city of Gaston. Not only does it bring jobs to the city of Gaston, but it's also a way of helping people with their healthcare and to have a better life. And so we thank you for what you're doing. This is a great, great project that's coming to Gaston, and so I hope that people will see it as a positive and not something that they will get on social media and talk negative about. This is something that's going to help people, and so we appreciate you all for doing that, and thank you for coming.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
And they didn't ask us for any tax breaks or anything, so we're just selling the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we can get this project started.
They bought the prop, oh, so you need to know that. They bought the property, what is it, it was valued at $500,000, and they bought the property for $600,000. So that's a plus for the city of Gaston, and we thank you.
We thank y'all.
Okay.
Through?
Yes.
Turn it back that way so the people can, oh, y'all turn it down. Y'all turn it that way so they can, that's where the camera is, back there, so the public can see it. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We don't have a one.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We don't have much.
Hmm? No. We will bring it up on the new business. Unfinished business, we have none today. We have one resolution. This is in Dawson, the East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission, Comprehensive Economic Developmental Strategy 2022. This is CEDS. This resolution expressed support for the process to identify goals, tasks, and other milestones, approaches to positively impacting the economic development in the region. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam President. You know, I don't, I think it's important to point out that the city of Gaston, as well as a number of municipalities in the region, have a longstanding relationship with the East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission. Many, many of us miss the opportunity to point out that when cities choose not to hire a grant writer, to a large degree, they're depending on this group to take care or fill some of that void for them, and they do an admirable job of stepping up for cities who haven't taken on the task of hiring a grant writer. So again, don't, please always know that from a grant-writing perspective and a strategic planning perspective, there's a body like the East Alabama Regional Planning Commission that supports municipalities at a really high level with a great deal of strategic value. So please understand that this is just a continuation of a great partnership.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
New business?
Yes, I have one, Madam President. This comes from, requested by the IDA. It's the legal department, number 306. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and consummate the sale of real property, South First Street between Riverside Drive and Cherry Street. Budgeted amount is, will receive $600,000 for the purchase of the land. I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have unanimous consent for consideration.
I have to move for adoption.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote? Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. We have a department report. We have Ms. Katie Holland, she's principal of Yer Brown School, update on the Bob Echols Outdoor Classroom.
Good morning, council members. Thank you for having me today.
Good morning.
I'm going to hand to you a little booklet as I give my presentation, where you're welcome to look through. If I can just hand that to you. So you'll get some pictures of the presentation that I'm sharing. My name's Katie Holland. I'm the principal of Yer Brown Elementary School. I'm excited today to share an update on the Robert W. Echols Outdoor Classroom that is under construction at Yer Brown Elementary School. This has been a project that's been in place for a while. When I arrived at Yer Brown Elementary School's principal was in 2017, I was faced with the challenge of what do you do at a school that you seemingly didn't need a lot of critical improvement at the time. They were coming right off of a 2016 National Blue Ribbon title. They were in great shape instructionally. So as an eager new principal at the time, what does this school need? And I quickly decided that something, a mindset to adopt is to elevate. How can we elevate our buildings, elevate our programs? And what I realized Yer Brown students needed were additions to the school that benefited not just the children that were currently in the building, but would benefit generations to come. Councilman Echols was one of the first community leaders to visit me. He didn't announce it or schedule a meeting. He just showed up, and my secretary called and said, hey, the city council member is in your office, and he's waiting on you. And so I dropped what I was doing, and I came, and I sat down, and I met Mr. Bob Echols. He handed me a check, or Yer Brown, a check, for, it was a very odd amount of money, and for the sake of the story, I gave sort of a strange amount. It was something close to this amount, like $748.21. And I thought that was an odd amount for a check. Normally, it's, you know, right at $1,000 or right at $1,500. And he said he'd reached the end of the fiscal year and that he was emptying out his discretionary funds, and he just wanted me to have it for whatever Yer Brown needed. And I believe at the time, I ended up purchasing some new stage risers that went towards the cost of that. And after doing a little bit more digging about Mr. Echols, I learned that this was very typical of him, that this was his norm. His MO was that he would do that for Yer Brown Elementary School and District 4. His daughter, Sherri Bridges, had been the librarian at Yer Brown Elementary School for a long time. I should have gotten the exact amount of years, but it was quite a while. And she had had this idea that she passed to our new librarian, Jana Brewer, right before she left about an outdoor reading area. There was a perfect spot behind the library that was like a blank canvas. So I called on a few talented folks within the Yer Brown community to help me design an area that could be used for this purpose, and thus, the Robert W. Echols Outdoor Classroom was born. A dream of his daughter's, an homage to the legacy of someone who cared for his community deeply and wanted to see it thrive long after he had left the earth. Lindley Gilmer is one of our Yer Brown parents. She's also now a Gaston Middle School parent, and she's got an incredible talent for design. She began designing the space in the spring of 2019, which was during my second year there. And we began the process of contacting local builders, piecing together the project. We knew we wanted plenty of seating, a nice level ground, beautiful landscaping, and literary elements embedded into the project. And we were actually inspired by the fencing that's around the YMCA that has the silhouette metal cut into it, and the idea was that we would have literary scenes that were throughout time embedded into the fencing. Coincidentally, while we were in the design process, the Wendy Van Hooten Teaching Garden was getting off the ground here in Gaston, and if anyone's familiar with the Wendy Van Hooten Teaching Garden, let me just stop right here and plug what an incredible program that is, and how fortunate Gaston is to have Jonathan and Becca Gardner back in town and doing this in our community. They've done this at many Gaston City schools, and they're trying to grow their program. So if you have an opportunity to support that nonprofit, they're incredible. I could do another presentation another day on them if you'd like. So they were providing a standards-aligned garden curriculum to the students. So next was going to be the funding, and this was, of course, where city council has come in. As our designs developed, we determined an original budget of about $21,000, give or take. I spent the remainder of the school year securing those funds so that we could begin, and we broke ground in fall of 2019. We had the garden installation ready to go in spring of 2020, but of course, enter COVID, school shut down, everything got pushed back. When we returned, priority shifted, materials were sky-high, labor was slow. After some reworking of everything, the new budget was around $35,000. This is where Councilman Kent Back, in true Mr. Echols fashion, showed up, approached me, sat down, said he basically believed in the project, he thought it was a great thing to get behind, and he wanted to help see this project finished. And I shared with him my woes of raising the money and how the cost had gone up, and he said, I'm happy to do what I can to support this project and get this off the ground. And he understood that we're not a Title I school. We don't get federal funding. Everything we do, we rely on the support of parents, community leaders, we rely on city leaders. In addition to about the $6,000 that I still had left from Mr. Echols, Councilman Back then funded an additional $17,339 to help us finish this project. And again, another odd little number. It was at the end of the year, ready to spend some discretionary money, and he made sure that the last few cents of that went to Yer Brown to help us reach our goal. I assured Councilman Back with these funds, the project would be completed, and we wouldn't have to cut any corners for cost. We are in the process of finishing Phase 3 right now. So where it stands right now is the enclosure of the classroom. We are functioning in the classroom right now. It is very, it's completely useful right now. We have the garden beds in. That was Phase 1. We had to level the ground up and put in a retaining wall. And then Phase 2, we added pea gravel for a nice, pretty surface, and then Phase 3, of course, will be this enclosure. The projected future additions will be a weather station. We've looked into a grant for a weather station and an outdoor musical park, similar to what's been installed at the Cultural Arts Center. They have some musical instruments out there that look like garden, garden elements, flowers, and then some canvas shading. It's currently partially shaded by the trees out there, but we eventually want to add some canvas shading. Once we have a completion date, we will host a dedication ceremony. We anticipate that to be early this fall, and of course, we want to officially name the space the Robert W. Echols Outdoor Classroom in that dedication ceremony, and we will extend an invitation to all of our city council members and anyone in the community that would like to come be a part of that project. If any members of the community would like to support this project and its sustainability costs, because this will continue to be an expense that we have at the school for years to come. We want to continue to add on to it and make it wonderful. We do have a fund set up at the school to collect donations. It is specifically for this project, and will only go to that project. So, and of course, if you'd like to visit the space, you're certainly welcome to come do so. I just want to say thank you to the city of Gaston for your support with this project, and personally thank Councilman Kent Back for just holding true to Mr. Echols' legacy in supporting your district, and just supporting the students at Yer Brown Elementary School. I also want to thank the members of the Yer Brown community like Lindley Gilmer, Andrew Bedwell with Bedwell and Horton Excavation, they helped with a lot of the projects, Ben Browning with Browning Enterprises for the metalwork, Commissioner Craig Enzer has helped given some funds to this, Jonathan and Becca Gardner with the garden curriculum, and of course, our PTA. And I'd like to just finish up by saying thank you to the city of Gaston for your improvements on the Raymond Hill Community Center as well. I know I've kind of gone off topic here, but we've had some fencing put up out there, some improvements to the parking lot, and a lot of lighting added out there, and it's really done a number for the Raymond Hill Community Center. So I want to thank the city for your support with that as well.
Ms. Holland?
Yes.
Have you, will there be a marker there identifying the naming and maybe a likeness of Mr. Echols?
It's actually, right now, the design is, once the enclosure is built, there is an archway, and the archway will have the name in there. It will have, notating the name of the classroom. Yes.
All right. Well, give some thought to his likeness, maybe, and, you know, if you'll get to it before November 1st, you might have some help.
I'll keep that in mind, Mr. Williams. Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming, and thank you for giving us an update on the classroom. All right. At this time, we'll have, oh.
Mr. Woodard.
Mr. Woodard.
No, Nick, I've got his hand up. No, Nick.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Part Ben, okay.
We just wanted to provide an update for the Elliott Wellness Center. I'd like to pass these out. We have recently removed all the asbestos out of it with Heath and the contractor that was out there. We're in the final design of this project, but we wanted to provide you an update and tell you where we are, and hopefully in about mid-first October, we'll have mobilized there to do some demolition, to begin the demolition process. Okay? Does everybody got a copy?
We're missing one copy.
Does everybody got one? All right, just to reiterate, this is going to be a 12,000-square-foot new facility over in Alabama City. We've talked with the architect, you know, with the removal of the school, and also with the current library over there. You'll see the design is sort of modeled after the Alabama City Library and got sort of a school look to it, but the intent was to put something back close as we could to this. Of course, the Elliott Center now was 31,000 square feet. This will be 12,000 square feet, and you'll see on the last page when we get to it where there'll be two pickleball courts added to the the backside of it. But we're turning the entrance, you know, the entrance is on Meagan now, and we're going to turn it to the 29th Street area where most of the parking is. On the backside, you'll be able to enter for the multipurpose room where you'll be voting or having larger events. We'll utilize the parking a little bit better than the previous layout on it. So everyone had to park at the side or the back and walk all the way to the front. But you'll see on the inside, once again, that we've got room for the senior nutrition, the large multipurpose room. There'll be several large rooms set aside for the seniors. One will be an exercise room, one will, there'll be several places for quilting, cards and all, pool table. So there'll be different types of settings. So it's not only for their physical well-being, but it's social well-being, physical well-being as well. But, and then you'll see on the far right where you'll see some, this is where we'll do some health screenings. This is where we'll tie in the COVID funding with this. It'll be, we maybe have a couple offices for the council on aging there to assist along with the director's slot. And we just feel like this is going to be advantageous for the seniors and their overall future at that location. And then finally, on the backside, you'll see the layout. Not only will we have some indoor activity, but we also wanted to provide some outdoor activity, where there'll be two pickleball courts added behind it. And also, if you'll see the little trail walking around it, it will provide outdoor walking around the facility as well. So we want to make sure that we have every opportunity for some senior recreational activities. And so it's going along well. I will tell you, this will probably be a 12- to 15-month build-out, and it'll probably, you know, we're starting demolition this fall. It'll probably, over the winter, it'll be a little bit weather days that we run into. So this may be the first of 24 before we open it up, but we are going to begin soon on the construction of it. So just to provide you an update. Is there any questions I could help you answer?
Can you speak to how the trolley system will be integrated into this new location here?
On the backside, you'll see two drive-throughs. This will be a drop-off point. One will be provided, you know, in fact, they can drop off if they need to go to the front of the building. There is a place there they can pull through for that. But then the two drive-throughs, there'll be one for them to pull back there. In the event that there was COVID or other problems in the future, there's drive-throughs set up to do either pick up your lunch from the senior nutrition program, or you can also do a drive-through vaccinations if that's the case. But we're going to be set up and better equipped in the future if there are a need for that. And some of our most vulnerable citizens of the COVID have been our seniors. So we want to try to address that and provide an avenue for that. And then also, once again, we'll have the meeting place that we can utilize for senior fairs or things of that nature that would be direct benefit for them as well.
Thanks.
Thank you. Very good reporting. I would just like to really make sure and instill that this stays a senior activity building, and not for someone or some group or even new council members come in and make a change in this, because this is well-needed for the seniors. Right now, they feel left out. So I'm hoping and praying that this will stay a senior activity building.
Well, that's our intent today. Thank y'all very much.
All right.
Madam President, I have one final announcement about our election. We are one week out from Election Day for Mayor, Council, and School Board. So absentee voting will be wrapping up this week. It's now too late for me to receive any applications in the mail. Today was the deadline for getting those. However, people can still walk in to the clerk's office and apply and vote in-person absentee through the day of Thursday. So all day today, Wednesday and Thursday, we'll continue that absentee voting in-person in the office. Also, I wanted to talk about, we did mail postcards. My collection is growing of postcards that have been returned to us in the mail that the post office was not able to deliver. So I would like to, one more time, announce all of the city polling places that will be used for next week's election. District 1, we have two locations, Antioch Family Life Center and East Gadsden Community Center. For District 2, East Gadsden Community Center and Thompson Community Center. In District 3, the former Gadsden High School Lunchroom, Carver Community Center and Thompson Community Center. For District 4, the Venue, Meadowbrook Family Life Center and Downtown Civic Center. District 5, Downtown Civic Center and the Tabernacle. District 6, Dwight Baptist Church and Walnut Park Community Center. District 7, Dwight Baptist Church and Kiwanis Pavilion. And you may have heard me say the same building more than one time. We have some dual polling locations, and in all of those buildings, we have two different districts set up totally separate for people to come and vote. Thank you.
Are there any other board reports? At this time, we'll have citizen requests. Mr. Woodard?
Thank you, Madam President, for allowing me to come today. Last Tuesday afternoon, my 85-year-old mother had a very serious medical emergency. She's a heart patient, got high blood pressure. Her blood pressure spiked at 270 over 160, and she was having trouble breathing, couldn't breathe. I know that she was scared because she's the one that told me to call the ambulance. She's normally stubborn and won't let us call the ambulance. But she asked me to call. She was scared. She told me before they actually got there, "I hope I can make it to the hospital." She actually thought she was dying, and my sister and I couldn't get her calmed down. So I called 911. Response time was great. They got there, and this group of gentlemen behind me are the ones that responded. Some of the ones that responded to the call, Commander came in, did a great job. My mom got her calmed down, got her breathing slowed down, talked to her, very sweet to her. By the time the ambulance pulled up, it'd come a driving rainstorm. And as they carried my mom out to the ambulance, Commander walked out, got soaking wet, and held an umbrella over my mother while they went and put her in the ambulance. So today, I want to give a sincere thank you to the fire department, the City of Gadsden, Alabama, the first responders. These guys are out there. They fight for us every day. I know they've done probably things for you similar to what they've done for my family. But I appreciate them so much. And as I stood here just a few weeks ago and told you how much I appreciated each one of you, I want to go ahead and say today, Councilman Williams, thank you for your service. I know you'll be coming off the council, Councilman Worthy, Councilman Cannon is not here. But, you know, I bragged on you guys about how much great work you've done, how you've worked together, and you have, you've done a great job. And again, I want to thank all of you for your service. But what a way to go out with a bang, get these guys a raise. Not to make you look good, but it's the right thing to do. God bless you.
An announcement that I have is due to the city, elections next Tuesday, August 23rd. Next week's council meeting and work session will be held on Wednesday, August 24th. So next council meeting will be Wednesday, August 24th. At this time, we'll have remarks from the council. Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Madam President. I did want to take the opportunity to once again thank David Hooks and his team at the Gadsden Etowah IDA for the work that they have pledged themselves to and continued to move through relative to industrial recruitment for the area. I don't want to minimize the securing of a cancer center and how important that is. So again, once again, thank you, Gadsden Etowah IDA, for continuing to do the work. And that kind of, I think, dovetails very nicely into something else that I want to make sure, another group that we want to make sure that we recognize, and that is all of our city employees, all of our department heads. Obviously, we just heard another example of people continuing to do their job. As you can imagine, it's an election year. And so what is typically a busy time anyway becomes busier, because there are a lot of new projects being presented, a lot of paving activity, a lot of, just in general, a lot of activity that either was going to happen anyway or comes in light of this being an election year. And so with that, our department heads and our city employees continue to do their jobs in spite of all the background noise. So I think it's important to continue to recognize those good folks, all those department heads. Kudos to you for continuing to do your job in spite of everything that's going on around you. The citizens of the city are benefiting, and I know they appreciate it. So thank you once again. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam President. Thanks. We had a job fair last week. We had about 100 people to show up. That wasn't too good. We had over 56 employers there with over 1,000 jobs. So we only had 56, so I thought I'd give that report. I want to talk about grass. That's the complaints I get in District 3. And it shouldn't be that our citizens, our elderly citizens, deciding whether they're going to buy groceries or they're going to pay for their medication, to have to pay somebody to cut a lot that don't belong to them, because they've been begging all year for that lot to be cut. So they not only cut the lot right there at Avenue H in Evans, they cut one across the street also. And these elderly people that doesn't have that type of money, and I understand that we're short. I found that out today, talked with some employees. They've lost 10 full-time grass cutters. So they have to rebuild that. And I understand they're taking different employees from different divisions and getting them on grass. But we just have to do a better job of that. And I know some people don't, you know, think cutting grass is a big deal, but it is in District 3, because we have a lot of abandoned lots. We, not only the nuisance lots, but we have city lots that the grass is taller than me, that the city own. So we just have to do a better job. And that's why I wanted to ask Mr. Hilton about that during the pre-council, but we didn't have time because we had to go into executive session. But I know they're doing the best they can. Now, I'm not up here complaining, but I just want to let the public know that's why they're not cutting the grass in our district and all over the cities, because they're very short. And we're trying to get people to come to work. So, Mr. Hilton, I'm not complaining. I'm trying to let the public understand why the grass is not getting cut. But they shouldn't have to pay somebody to come, and those are big lots. They have to use the bigger lawn mowers. They can't just go out there and use a push mower, because that Johnson grass, it grows faster than regular grass. So we have to get a grip on this. And I understand, we only cut about 21 nuisance lots since July. So we're just going to have to go out and be aggressive with hiring people, and that's something that we need to look at in the budget, because we got to get these people a raise and get it up to level par where they'll come and work for the city. Because grass cutters, if they go work for a regular, a person that has a lawn care system, job accompanied, they will make a lot more money than here. So we have to do something. And that's something that we can think about. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman?
Oh, yeah. Go vote. I don't care who you're voting for. Go to the polls and vote, because I'm hearing a lot that people are saying they're just going to wait, because there's so many people running, they're going to wait till runoff. Hey, your person may not make it to the runoff if you don't go vote on the 23rd. So please go vote. Thank you. I see the attorney looking at me. I'm not going to say nothing else. I'm just saying go vote. And thanks for Bishop Smith being here. Also, Mr. Avery being here. Let me, Bill Avery, because he's in the audience. He's running also. I don't see anybody. Oh, Mr. Horn, Sergeant Major Horn that's running, and Woodard also, but he came up and spoke. These people are all that's running. So thank y'all for being here, and everybody else, our regulars. I'm done.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo Councilman Williams' observation of the IDA, David Hooks, and the Cancer Center, that it will be coming to First Street, just almost next door to Riverview Hospital. That's hopefully the first of many healthcare initiatives that you will be seeing over the next few years. You might remember, this council has voted to build out some office space at the venue, $1.4 million. 25% of that space is for the IDA offices. Another 25% is for AHEC, which is the group Alabama Health, and I can't remember the rest of it, but they're the group that put on the RAM event at Gadsden City High School about a month or so ago. And then 25% is a co-working space, like a workforce innovation-type space. And then 25% is like a working space, that people can either rent space or can come in. But the IDA has two vertical markets that they're approaching for the future. One is healthcare, and the other one is technology. You might have heard me say before that we're looking to let things from UAB and Southern Research Institutes, programs like that, to come to Gadsden, so we can have those kind of jobs and careers. So today, you're hearing about the first one, and hopefully a line of many, which is the Cancer Institute that's going to come to Gadsden. So there's a lot of work going on behind those scenes, but that's where our tax dollars are being invested. We're looking at bringing those type jobs here. And also involved in that is Councilman Williams arranged for the City of Gadsden to be part of an Alabama League of Municipalities. First class is called the Economic Development Academy. We're one of 30 cities that are participating this year. It's being taught by Mr. Neil Wade, who you might remember his name. He was the Department of Commerce Director when Mercedes came to Alabama and Honda came to Alabama. He went to Florida when he left Alabama and was their Director of Commerce, and he's retired now, lives in Antiana. But he writes books on economic recruitment and industry recruitment, and he's teaching this course. And we're a part of this, Councilman Williams, myself, David Hooks, Dr. Kathy Murphy at Gadsden State, along with the Dean of Health Sciences over there, Dean Ken Kirkland. So we've met three times. We have one more meeting left to go, and we had to choose a project. Our project was the 1.4 million IDA Office and Workforce Innovation Center at the Venue. And that has been a topic of conversation in that class for the last nine months, and with Neil Wade helping us and giving us input into how to build it out, how to attract those industries in healthcare and technology. So I really think we're going to see some fruit come from those efforts, and it's been very educational. Neil Wade is kind of the godfather of industrial recruitment, at least for the southeast, if not the whole United States. He's been very helpful in his teaching for what we're doing with this program. And then I wanted to thank Katie Holland at Yerba Brown Elementary School. You know, I have one school in my district, and it's Yerba Brown. They receive no federal funds, so I have tried to help them with my discretionary funds, just as much as I could. You heard the name Bob Echols or Robert Echols. He held this chair that I'm sitting in for 32 years. He served eight terms as the District 4 Council Member. It's a pleasure to get to honor him, help honor him through the Robert E. Echols Robert E. Echols Outdoor Classroom. If you knew Bob, he was just a great guy. Really loved the City of Gadsden. He did a lot behind the scenes all over the city, but especially at Yarra Brown School. And it's just a pleasure and a real humble honor to get to participate in any way to help something that's named after Bob Echols. So thank you, Madam President.
Okay. Councilman Wilson?
I don't have anything, Madam President.
Councilman Reed?
Yes, I don't think anybody has to tell me about our medics, our first responders. I had two occasions when I had a really, really bad situation at my house at, say, 2:00 in the morning, 1:00 in the morning. And I called the fire medics, and they were there. And I'm going to tell you what, that is a welcome sight. When you don't know what in the world to do, you're disflourished. They come in and they handle the situation. And I can't thank them enough, and always has thanked them. Police Department, I've been with them. I know what they do. How in the world they do it, I don't know. But they get through it and they go home. But anyway, my appreciation goes out to both those units. I want to speak about Alabama City. We started with the Old Forest School, and that's a center of Alabama. I think it has Transportation Department in it, has Boys and Girls Club, and a beautiful building. It was a start. We moved on to the gazebo in Alabama City, then the Ritz Theater. We moved the genealogical equipment and all that from the library downtown to that library over in Alabama City. And that's a stopping place for a lot of people. But when this wellness center came up, it just, I don't know, it's something for the people in Alabama City especially, and it's something that's really well-needed. I want to thank everybody that's involved in it, as far as Johnny, he's not here, but Johnny was a pusher in this for a long, long time. And I got to thank Johnny. But it's so much appreciated that everything's going well over there. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, and I echo the sentiments, as far as our first responders, our city staff, we do appreciate everything that they do, because if what they didn't do, then we couldn't do our job up here. And as I was telling everybody, you know, we support the firemen, we support the police department, especially me. I told the chief, I said, "I was on the West Coast last week trying to recruit police officers. There were four police officers on bicycles, and I was at a women's conference, and we, all of us, just gathered around those four police officers, and they asked where we were from." And I told them I was from Alabama, and I was in need of 19 police officers. Could they come? And so they just drove off. Naturally, they're not going to come. But anyway, we support our first responders. We support everybody. And we just want to thank you for what you do. If nothing else, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.